Recording, so why don't you go look for John and maybe bring him over to the meeting if he's over on the other, on the dark side.
Okay, so I see. I see the chief and I see Clausen, so I, okay, here we go, promote.
Bring, bring them both over, yep, so they didn't, you've, the council member Clausen and Chief Brown failed to read the instructions in their emails, so. We're gonna get there.
I actually read two emails, one suggesting that we were gonna get on through the web and then one later today that says, oh, we're gonna do a normal Zoom, I tried both. When I tried to normal Zoom, it said, oh, there's another meeting going on, so the host won't let you in.
Too many instructions.
I just.
Overload.
Alright, so this is, this is the format, we're gonna try this, the webinar version, so as I was sharing with them, we're gonna do, we're supposedly streaming live on Facebook and YouTube and. So I'm, right now, I'm rambling, so why don't I just call this meeting to order, this is the Porter Street City Council Work Study Session for February 16th. Brandy, would you mind sharing your screen so that we can do the Pledge of Allegiance?
Yeah.
Trying all kinds of new things here, maybe.
Almost there.
I promise we'll get better at this.
Let's see.
There it is, alright, that, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alright, Brandy, you can stop sharing, and if you could, we've got, I believe, somebody from Kitsap Transit here to give us a presentation, if you could bring them into the, into the meeting.
Yeah, can I go ahead and introduce the presenters?
Yeah, but they need to join us first, Brandy's gotta bring them over, they aren't, they aren't in our meeting yet. Alright.
While we're doing that, Nick, before you jump in there, I just want to remind folks that I'm an employee of Kitsap Transit, although I don't believe there's any decisions going to be made tonight. Anybody wants me to recuse myself, I will, otherwise I will participate.
Anyone want, wishing for Mr. Clausen to recuse himself, this is an informational meeting only, so seeing heads shaking, no, just like Mr. Chang when he talks about Wash Dot, you're stuck with us.
Alright, sounds good, thank you.
Oh, I see Ed and Sandy, is that the, the two of you, or the, and go, whoever's presenting, is there a PowerPoint, or is Brandy gonna allow you to share a screen?
Sandy's gonna be presenting, so hopefully.
There we go, Sandy, you're unmuted.
Yeah, so if I can, I can, may I go ahead and share my screen?
Certainly.
Great.
Dick, did you want to introduce them?
Oh, it says host disabled participant screen sharing, so someone will have to give me permission.
Yep, Brandy, that's Brandy's job. Nick, go ahead.
Well, Brandy, while Brandy is giving you permission, Sandy Glover works for Parametrics and is the consultant who was hired to do the Kitsap Transit SR16 Park and Ride Study, and then Ed Covielo is the transportation planner with Kitsap Transit. And is here to support Sandy and potentially answer some questions, if I got that wrong, please correct me, Sandy and Ed.
Okay, sorry. Great, so.
Brandy, are you ready to share?
I have made her co-host, so she should be able to share her screen.
Perfect. Go ahead.
Great, everybody should be able to see my, my screen, I just wanted to say thank you very much for inviting me here today to present. Um, so.
We're not seeing.
Can everybody hear me?
We can't see your screen, you're not sharing yet.
Gotcha, I had one more click I needed to do.
Alright.
Great, so again, thank you very much for inviting me here today to present the SR16 Park and Ride Study that was developed by Kitsap Transit. A little bit about this project, it was a park and ride study, it was conducted to identify a park and ride location along SR16. Study limits were from the county line to the Tremont area within, within one half mile of the four interchanges. Some of the project benefits, improved mobility and greater transportation choices to access downtown Port Orchard, downtown Bremerton, and the Southworth Ferry Terminal. Expanded connections to transit, improved car pools and van pools access. Reduced parking demand and traffic congestion, improved quality of life through reduced traffic and parking congestion. And increased use of non-SOV options, leading to decreased greenhouse emissions. So some of the park and ride location needs, when we started out on the study, we wanted to identify what was important. That we needed to make sure we were able to provide for a park and ride, we needed sufficient area at the three bus bays. And some layover space for buses and some parking as well for those overnight workers. That it can accommodate required mitigation for impacts to critical areas, such as streams and wetlands. We wanted to make sure things were located within one half mile of an interchange along SR16, that was important for good access. Located in an area that facilitates connections to high activity areas such as downtown Port Orchard, Bremerton, and the Southworth Ferry. And located within the urban growth boundary that can capture growth to the west of SR16. So project priority was very important for us to intercept single occupancy vehicles to reduce congestion within the worst area, then downtown Bremerton, downtown Port Orchard. While also considering transit operations and site accessibility, and also the fast word, the, the southward fast ferry access. We worked with many stakeholders along the way, city of Bremerton, city of Port Orchard, Kitsap County, Kitsap Public Health. Pejuson Naval Shipyard, Suquamish Tribe, and WSDOT, thank you to everybody who has provided input into this project. And just a little bit about the evaluation and how it went, we did four screens with increasing detail. So the very first screen that we did, that you can hear, see here is a fatal flaw, we looked at every site that met those needs that I, that I previously mentioned. So we used a GIS tool to really understand where wetlands were and some of our other issues and make sure we had the right size. We did that, went through a level one, went through a level two screening, which is shown here, we won't get into what that says, but, and then we went into a level three screening. Some of the evaluation criteria we looked at, within a half mile of the SR16 interchange, we wanted to make sure that it was, oops, we wanted, we wanted to make sure it was affordable. So the value of the site, the size of the site, we were looking for something over four acres to make sure we had enough room to build a park and ride lot. Visibility and accessibility from an arterial, visible from SR16, transit operations, traffic operations, make sure that they were functioning well. We looked at sensitive lands and topographic constraints, zoning, ease of development and acquisition, potential for expansion, the cost, parking demand and draw. If it was served by existing bus routes, we wanted to look at safety, transit oriented development opportunities, and to meet the principles of the Growth Management Act. So these were all criteria that helped us screen each of these alternatives. When we got down to site, down to level three, we had four sites that were still in consideration. We had option one over here, we had option two over here, and then we had a couple of other, this is site three and site 13. And it really came down to these couple of sites here, say, this option one, which used to be site two, and this option two, which used to be site nine, so we'll just refer to them as option one and option two from here on out. But when we looked at those, those remaining sites, so here's option one, when we looked against all the criteria, we could see that option one and option two really rose to the top. Of the evaluation, and they were really pretty close, um, so option one got a score of 75, option two got a score of 73, very, very close. So what are these two remaining sites, option one and option two look like? So option two, I'm sorry, option one is there at the old landfill site. And you can see here, you've got Old Clifton Road coming in from SR16. And we would be required to do some kind of access revision here to improve access, but buses would come in this way, come in through here. And, and they would, they would pull into these bus bays right along here, layover along this way, enough room for, for these spaces where we were looking for 250 stalls minimum. It had wetland on there, so there's a little bit of wetland mitigation that's assumed. But obviously, this, this location has some risks associated with it because of the cleanup that, that would be required. There's definitely a longer schedule than the other site in order to be able to develop something like this. But, but the great thing about this is, this location and building a park and ride lot on top of an old landfill site is really a great thing for the community, it's a good fit. But there were some other things that were, that came into consideration on this one, one was perceived safety. How, how would riders feel being next to the work release? And also the juvenile facility across the street, so those are some considerations. And also, there's, there's no real surrounding TOD opportunities. Because it's industrial zoning. So those were just some things that were considerations for option one. When we got into option two, you can see, this is, this is Sydney Road right here, Sedgwick is right here, and it comes around, and there's a signal right here. So again, enough room for at least 250 spaces. You can see, we've got Blackjack Creek that comes along here, and there's a wetland boundary, and then there's also a wetland buffer boundary, and we are in that wetland buffer. We're looking to do some buffer mitigation on site. Possibly even looking at the site below to see if there's some wetland buffer improvements we can do down there as well. Some of the great benefits with this, Ruby, the Ruby Creek Subarea Plan, this fits right in. You know, so you have a lot more walkers to this site than you do to the other site. So overall, major benefits and risks, so option one, which is the landfill site, option, option two, which is Sydney Road down by Sedgwick. So when we're talking about option one, we've got landfill remediation would result in a longer scheduled timeline for site development, this complicated permitting process, higher project costs. However, a benefit of that is that the landfill remediation and use of the site as a park and ride serves the community the benefit. There are perceived safety issues due to the proximity to the work release facility and juvenile detention center. As well as fewer eyes on the site, because there's not as much traffic up there, not people living really close. Current zoning and future land use plans allow little opportunity for transit oriented development up there. When we're looking at option two, site nine, development of a park and ride is consistent with Ruby Creek Subarea Plan, with potential to support and or achieve overall vision for the area. Impacts with critical area buffers would require offsite mitigation, now, that's, that's, that's a little out of date, now we are looking onsite for mitigation and additional approvals. From the city of Port Orchard be required in order to do that work, but we're looking at a beautiful site there once we're all done. Some good things about site nine, current and planned development will result in increased density in the neighborhood and provide for a greater visibility on the site. And the Ruby Creek Subarea Plan envisioned substantial, substantial growth in the vicinity, including transit oriented development, so those are a few good things about site nine. But I'm gonna continue about these major differences. So for option one, the site has slightly higher draw for single occupancy drivers, but it would have fewer walkers to the site. And when you were looking at option two, the future development area would support non-motorized access to the site, additional transit options in the area. It could offset some of the transportation impacts associated with growth. And here are some preliminary costs that we came up with, granted, this is a very high level cost at a study level. The percent of design at this level was, you know, probably 2%, so it's, it's not a lot, we didn't get on the site and do survey. So a lot of this estimation is from our GIS work that we did. So site two, you can see with site construction, it's a little bit more because of the access improvements there, remediation is a little bit more expensive. Design and construction for site nine, a little, or for option two, just a little bit less expensive. Right away, though, you have that cost, so that's a cost that isn't here for option one. However, there is an opportunity that when we select, if we select option two. That there's an opportunity to sell the street frontage for transit oriented development, which, which could help fund additional park and ride at site two or at option one. So a couple other things we consider, we're looking at the evaluation of between. Our option one was, which was up here, and our option two that was over here, you can see this future central location of where workers would be. And you can see that would really serve either way, and that was based on the comprehensive plan. As it was about a year ago, the subarea plan, other, other growth in the area would be moving this centroid down and towards this way. Which, which would even make the site down here more attractive. So Nelson Nygaard was a so consultant for us, and what they did is they looked at what kind of demand there would be on the park and ride lots, and this is a lot of numbers. But the end result is at option one, up there on the landfill site. Park and ride demand at the current central location of where workers are, you'd get about 355 parkers for option one and 404 for option two. So as that future central location moves around, though, that flips a little bit, and so you have, you have more that will want to go to option, option one. But really, the big message of this is there's draw at both of those facilities and a park and ride in the future at each location is really necessary, or would be well utilized. Little bit about the past, we did an online open house in 2020. So we had 87 participants, got feedback, participants did not have a strong preference between the two park and ride location options and felt that both provided good access. Participants liked the option to have more free public parking options for accessing public transportation. Participants expressed concerns that the cost of the projects would be too high to justify a small reduction in the number of vehicles on the road would not serve to reduce congestion, so these are straight out of the reports. Participants mentioned they would like to see expanded bus routes as part of the project, some respondents felt that the survey did not adequately address drivers who travel through worst and proximity to interchanges was the overwhelming priority for participants. When selecting a park and ride location, so that was good information that we took in. Just a little bit about funding, so Kitsap Transit has funding secured for, for the preliminary study, which we just completed, and for preliminary engineering, which will go through 30%. And the environmental documentation, the right away money is secured and construction, this also might be updated since we did this last, but it's, it's pending as well. So what's our recommendation? The team, we all recommend option two, because the development aligns with Ruby Creek Subarea Plan. It presents an opportunity for partnership to, to develop community assets. Potential to serve multiple uses during non-peak demand times, so parking for perk users or businesses, special events, residences, a little shared parking opportunity. And it would offset transportation impacts of growth. It would have greater opportunity for non-motorized access, has a lower development risk, and also a shorter schedule. So this team recommended to Kitsap Transit to go for option two. And while the team, while we recommend option two, option one is still a considered feasible site for a location of a park and ride facility, subject to site remediation. So with the selection of option two, upon development, Kitsap Transit could sell that frontage property and fund the development of option one. We could put together some renderings, we took your, your Ruby Creek area, subarea plans, CAD files, and we did some revision, some re-lay out in this area. And fit in park and ride behind an additional parking for the businesses. And this would be open space mitigation, I know the city has an interest in this area as a park, or some kind of open space. Just another view, little bird's eye view. So lift station, I understand the city needs to have a lift station, some other improvements, we'll be working closely with Port Richard on those items. Next steps, during 2021, preliminary engineering, the NEPA environmental evaluation, and the right away purchase. In 2022, be finishing up final design, and 2023, construction and project opening. So that's all I have. Are there any questions?
I, having, since I serve on the transit board, we seen this, saw this presentation last year, and the transit board did. Vote to accept this recommendation and move forward on the Ruby Creek site. You know, we've got a number of people kicking the tires on the land around Ruby Creek, and I think transit needs to move, you know, move on that property sooner versus later. The dump site, nobody's looking at the dump site, and that site will always be there for a future park and ride lot, so I, I, as a transit board member, I fully support the, the direction that, that was recommended, so. Councilmember Chang, you, you raised your hand.
Yeah, um, I, I appreciate the presentation, and I understand the, the preference for site two. One question at the back of my mind is, um, do we happen to know if this might help offset some of the parking that currently goes to downtown Port Orchard?
That's the plan.
Yes.
Okay, because, and then the follow-up from that is that, and we may not know this, but do we have an idea of where the people parking in downtown Port Orchard originate from? Where are they driving from and would site two be, you know, would they go there instead? I think that's what the hope is, but do we know how many of the people park downtown would go there?
Yeah, we don't have, we don't know exactly how many of the people who park down there would, would, would ride the park and ride lot, but. With the parking restrictions that are happening in downtown Port Orchard, including, you know, in downtown Bremerton, those are all incentives for people to get on the bus. And park and, park and ride.
Councilmember Chang, really, this is about creating an opportunity for parking, a park and ride on the west side of the freeway, we've got one at Mitchell, we've got one at the Armory, and a large one, you know, out of the Southworth Ferry to support transit operations, so. It's just kinda, and of course, in Mullinex, there's a park and ride lot that's always in capacity, so. It's by having, having some lots everywhere, Councilmember Clausen?
Yeah, I would just add to it, as Sandy mentioned, one of the criteria was an area that is currently served by transit, and transit currently has a bus route. That basically goes out to Albertson's right next door, so we would have all day service operating from this location to downtown Port Orchard, so. The expectation would be that at least those that are parking downtown, there's a financial incentive in that this is gonna be free parking, as opposed to going downtown and paying for parking, so there's a kind of a built-in incentive to reduce. Those coming from the west side and just jump onto a route that's already there. Also, the folks that are going to PSNS, these, we have worker driver buses that will go by this lot, jump right on to Highway 16. And go right over to the shipyard, so we'll be able to siphon some of those folks who are currently parking downtown as well.
Other questions? Councilmember Lucarelli?
Yeah, so with, with the shift of workers parking in a park and ride and taking a bus, rather than parking downtown and taking the foot ferry, would that impact the foot ferry negatively, do you think?
I, I can answer this one, right now, the worker driver buses that go by Albertson's, you go out there in the morning, at least pre-COVID, there was a very long line, probably 40 to 50 people, and there's two trips. And so they're already using the worker driver, so I don't think it'll have a negative impact, and the park and ride might actually put more demand for another worker driver route, especially with the growth occurring, not just west of there.
Thank you.
And I'd see the mayor ran off, so while he's gone, I guess I would add one additional comment, he was talking about the interests in that area out there currently. It is my plan to go to my transit board for which the mayor is a member of, at the next meeting, which is March 2nd. And ask for permission to be able to move forward with the purchase of the right away, so that we're not. Stringing the property owners along while there's increasing demand for the area and asking them to wait while we finish our design, so. Hopefully, on the second, I'll have correction to go forward with negotiating purchases.
Go ahead, Red, Jay.
Hey, John, what's the time, overall timeline from start to finish, I know that, you know, you've, you've got some of the money set aside, and by the way, I think the option is an excellent choice.
Well, it's, it's a good question, Sandy, I think you laid out a little bit of the timeline there, as far as. This year, we're planning on, you know, doing the design and, and acquisition, we've got more design work that's gonna be done, so I'm guessing it's probably gonna be. What, Sandy, three years before it's finished?
Yep, so yeah, 2023, start construction, 2024 would be open.
Now, that doesn't mean that we can't, also during that, I will. Also during that simultaneously negotiate some arrangements for the POD portions. So maybe there could be some additional work going on simultaneously with the parking right.
And Rob, I guess just one clarification. So yeah, the site one, just for the future, if that in the future looks viable. Just know that remediation, I met with ecology and remediation isn't, you know, removing all that. Tapping of that with a parking lot and having some sort of like methane collection would be remediation. So just as you guys make decision in years from now, know that it isn't a six million dollar digging the whole thing out kind of a thing. So. Just wanted to pass that on and I have that documented if anybody wants it. So.
Well, I would add that it is certainly my goal. To be able to get the both park and rides built. Essentially, once we're able to do both Sedgwick and landfill. We will have a park and ride at each of the intersections on highway sixteen from Molinix. Sedgwick and Tremont and that. Our goal would be to try to get as many folks onto transit before they hit Gorse to help reduce some of that. Vehicle travel through Gorse. So that's kind of the long term goal that I have.
Other questions for the transit folks? All right. Thank you, Ed and Sandy. Greatly appreciate the update.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, Brandy, I think we've got a couple of representatives from Rice, Fergus Miller that you want to bring into the meeting. And. Steve Rice and then.
Is it those three?
Jason Ritter Lipowski.
And then what about Morgan, tech, mechanical engineer?
You have to ask Steve Rice when he gets here. Who else he wants you to bring in. Bring Steve Rice in first. And then Jason.
Yeah, Steve and Jason, definitely.
Those two have been in as the panelists.
Great.
Yes, I'm Morgan. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And, and then if you could. Allow Jason to share his screen. I bet he's. Right. Thank you for joining us. As you know, our city hall is a little over twenty years old and it's getting a little tired. The roof's not leaking yet, but it will soon. The windows do leak, the siding is failing in a few different places. And it's time to think about weatherizing city hall. But I guess the roof does leak at the clock tower. We've got a, a large tub up there and a sump pump that pumps water out up there. But with that, we've been evaluating different options and done a body of work over the last six months or so. And Steve Rice from Rice, Fergus Miller and Jason Ritter. And are here to talk to us about our options for city hall. Take it away.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everybody. Thanks for having us again. There are three of us on the call today from our team. In addition to myself, Jason Ritter, Lil Potowski is with us. He is our firm's project manager and project architect. On this effort and has been really the guy steering the team. And, and we have Morgan here with us, who is a mechanical engineer at Ecotop, one of our sub consultants and an expert in HVAC and, and. Energy use. So what we plan to do tonight, we have a presentation for you. We are, we are at what's called the thirty percent project status, which means that we're. A third of the way roughly to what we would call one hundred percent. Construction documents ready for bidding. So a good point to, to pause. And consider all these options. We also have a thirty percent cost estimate. Mayor is right. We started this in September. We work closely with the mayor, Mark Dorsey, Tony Lang. There's been a lot of conversation on the project. I think we've settled in to a really good place. Gone through a lot of, a lot of options and approaches to solving the issues at city hall. And we think we have some clear direction for that. The mayor was good to highlight most of the issues that we'll be dealing with in this project. A lot of it has to do with the envelope, of course. But also it's good to remind everyone that the HVAC system is near the end of its life. It's, it's very inefficient. And we have some state mandates coming up. So those are kind of working together kind of nicely, actually. But our task, you know, as, as, as we took it when this project started. Was to provide the city with a weather tight building. A higher performing envelope, which will make it more efficient to, to operate. And to greatly reduce the ongoing maintenance that your current situation requires. So. With that as an introduction, the bulk of this will be done by Jason. I think he's got Morgan here as well. And Jason's going to take you through kind of the big picture and where we've arrived with. With your team, my mayor's team on what we think are the right answers moving from thirty to a hundred percent. So Jason, take it away.
Thank you, Steve, and good evening, everybody. Nice to meet all of you virtually at least. As Steve mentioned, I'm going to kind of go over, we'll call it a thirty thousand foot view of this project, kind of touching base on where it's been, ideally where it's going. And kind of all the different processes we've gone through up to this point, up to our thirty percent benchmark. As you can see from the first slide, we're looking right at city hall. When we typically approach a reskin project, one of the first questions that we oftentimes get asked is what is this building going to look like when it's all done? And we understand from mayor, from, from Mark, from a lot of the council members here, that this building. Has an identity for Port Orchard and that we would don't want to disrupt that identity. It's an icon to downtown. And it's a landmark. And essentially what we're going to do is provide you an identical looking building when all said and done. Even though it may look the same, I can guarantee you it's not going to perform the same. It's going to perform leaps and bounds better than what it is right now. But if you look at the exterior facade, we'll focus on the walls for starters. There's two main materials that you're looking at. You've got the, the brick along the base and kind of that clock tower and you've got the lap siding. The brick fortunately is in pretty good condition. Recently, we were actually on site and removed some brick from an inconspicuous spot. To get a camera behind there and actually look at the brick ties to make sure it was structurally sound. To look at the flashing that was behind the brick to make sure that it was installed correctly. And good news is it's in good condition. So the brick itself can remain pretty much as is. All we're suggesting for that work is a simple clear coat to prevent water infiltration through the surface of the brick or through the grout joints. The lab siding is a little bit more involved. As Steve mentioned, you know, the, the lap siding is, is cracked, water is leaking behind it. It's kind of hit the end of its life. And so for us to find a material that would produce, or I'm sorry, perform. Much better than the lap setting you have now, we had to look at quite a few different options. And so we explored many materials. We looked at vinyl siding as a kind of a bottom tier option. We looked at a direct replacement of Hardy that you currently have on the building and we looked at a few other materials as well. But the one component that we made sure of for these facade materials is that each of them would be installed in what we call a rain screen fashion. And our rain screen is basically a fancy word of saying, or fancy way of saying that the facade can breathe a little bit easier. So your current building, I kind of show an example in here, has these lap siding boards, but they're directly attached to the exterior wall. And so what happens there is the water gets through this siding, kind of gets trapped in that, in that space between the waterproofing membrane and the, the material itself. What a rain screen does is it adds these additional furring strips, which provide these drainage channels behind the siding material. So as water gets through that material, if it gets that material, it has a place to drain, get out of the assembly and more importantly, the wind. And the, the air can get behind there to dry out the system. So it doesn't rot the structure that's behind there. So all of the options we looked at could be installed in a rain screen format. So the next item we had to look at was what material could we use that would perform as well as look the same as your current assembly? Like I said, we started off with vinyl material, but that's just not the approach we want to go with on this building. It's a, it's city hall. So we final was, was removed pretty quick from the options. Direct replacement for Hardy, we have is here, but then you're still running into the same issues that you currently have. It could crack. You've got to maintain it. The paint peels, just really not a great performing product. Hardy makes a thicker product, so it'd be more durable, but you're still running into the same maintenance issues. You have to paint it every few years and it's still potentially could crack and leak. And we looked at non-Hardy products. So we looked at a product called Sembrant, which is a little higher density product. We looked at other products that weren't actually lap siding. This one here is made out of fly ash and then even metal panel. But these diverted a little bit too far away from the aesthetics of city halls. We opted not to go that direction. Ultimately, we landed on a product called Sembrant and this is, it's a higher density panel than what Hardy is currently. And so the higher density means it's definitely much more durable as a siding material. The other benefit that this product has is the color is completely through the entire panel. So it's baked into the panel when it's manufactured, which means there's no painting when you install it. And more importantly, there's no painting down the road. It simply requires a quick cleaning every so often. Fortunately, Sembrant comes in lots and lots of colors and we even have a product match right now to what you currently have in your building. So this is the kind of the, the materiality that we've leaned on for the lap siding for the project was a product called Sembrant. As we look, go to the next page, sorry. Once we get outside of the facade materials, we want to make sure that the building could perform better. And performance doesn't just mean durability of materials, but it meant, it means efficiency of the building. In order for us to increase the efficiency of the building, we had to increase the insulation on the building. The current structure doesn't meet our building code in terms of insulation. So we wanted to try to figure out what can we do to meet the energy codes minimums at this point in time, the twenty eighteen building code. And so we looked at different options and I won't bore you with the technical details, but we looked at different where areas to put insulation in order to get our envelope to perform. The way it should without issues of condensation or potential freezing pipes in the building. And ultimately what we landed on is adding additional insulation above the roof and outside of the existing walls in order to give us a nice thermal envelope around our entire project. It meets the current building code and it keeps the performance inside elevated as well. So we're not going to have freezing pipes. You're not going to have drafts, which is one of the big issues that I'm seeing right now in the current building. So when we start putting insulation above the roof, there was a few items we had to be cognizant of. One of which was the weight that we'd be adding on top of the roof. Our structural engineer had a threshold of ten percent that we couldn't exceed. Meaning that we, if we exceeded this ten percent weight increase on top of the roof, we would have to structurally analyze the building. Or seismic retrofit and potentially upgrade our structure to meet current codes. So we wanted to make sure that we stayed below that ten percent added weight threshold. And so as we looked at different roof assembly options for that increased insulation and shingles, we had to take into account how much the whole system weighed. And the first option we looked at was simply scraping the shingles off and putting new shingles on. But unfortunately, this doesn't give us more insulation. It doesn't increase the performance of our roof. So we have to, that wouldn't be a really good approach. The second option we looked at was let's add more insulation on top of the roof like we wanted to. But then we have to get the shingles to perform as they require for their thirty year warranty, which requires venting behind them. The problem with this assembly is it was too heavy. It exceeded that ten percent threshold. Some are like, okay, what if we used a lighter weight material for the roofing membrane instead of shingles and went to a metal roof? The issues with the metal roof, though, is it's slippery when wet and so it becomes a hazard for anybody up there maintaining the roof. As well as hazard to the public down below in the event of snow like we've had recently. You can imagine snow falling off of this metal roof down sixty feet. So we opted not to go with a metal roof insulation. Our options that we have settled on was then removing the existing assembly all the way down to the metal deck and building fresh, starting from the ground up essentially. Adding the insulation that we need to get to code minimum, adding our venting strips, kind of like a rain screen system on our roof. And then adding a new thirty year shingle, which now it can be warranted for the full thirty years because it's installed per manufacturer's details. So these are the kind of assemblies that we've opted to go with on this project. For the walls, it's a similar kind of concept. The existing studs have insulation in them. We can't add more insulation between the studs because they're already full. So in order for us to get more insulation on the walls, we have to add insulation outside of the studs. So what that means is we pull off the existing siding, we pull up the existing water barrier and we expose the existing sheathing that's on the outside of the building. After sheathing is in good condition, we'll leave it in place. If the sheathing is damaged because of water, then we would replace those portions of sheathing with new sheathing. We would then put a new weather barrier on, new insulation in order to meet our code minimums. There's the rain screen furring strips and then your new lap siding. So you get a much higher performing envelope around your building, both your walls and your roof now, which meet current building code. The other component, I guess the other side of the coin to performance is not just the envelope itself, but what goes inside of the building. As Steve said, the, the current HVAC system is kind of reaching its end of life. Initially, we were thinking about just replacing the controls and possibly replacing a few components inside the building to kind of limp it along for a while. But when we realized that the components were at their end of life or had a few years left. As well as this mandate that Steve had mentioned coming up in twenty thirty. This mandate is by Washington State is stating that all building heating has to be carbon neutral energy. Which essentially means that we can't use natural gas any longer in buildings come twenty thirty. So because we're replacing HVAC components now, it made the most sense to actually electrify all of our HVAC components. So get away from natural gas. And so the systems that we're recommending. Remove all the gas powered boilers, the gas powered hot water heaters and replace them with all much more efficient heat pump systems. So we would have a new heat pump water heater, you'd have new heat pump mini splits throughout your, your project as well to help create. I guess much more constant temperature through your building versus the wildly varied space heaters that you see currently in everybody's office. We provide new dedicated outdoor air systems so that we've got nice and fresh air coming in to help replenish the stagnant air inside the room. As well as much more updated controls. So you can control where all the HVAC is getting distributed to. With the lifespan of these HVAC systems and the energy savings that you would have with these systems. It actually has a payback that fits within the lifespan of the, the units themselves. So this is a system that will pay itself back over the life of its unit. So I thought that was pretty impressive to, to see that kind of payback option. The envelope system in this chart kind of shows, you know, what, what you have currently installed. So your existing siding is basically at its end of life. Your existing windows are at its end of life and your existing roof has a few years left. The new systems, you're looking at thirty years across the board for the performance of those systems. The last component that we look at for performance is your electrical system as well. So right now your building is full of fluorescent lighting. One of the upgrades we're recommending is to go to LEDs. That would save quite a bit of energy as well as heat from all of the ballasts that are in the fluorescent fixtures, which also reduces the amount of HVAC cooling loads that you need to worry about trying to keep the building cold. With the LED lighting. The increased thermal envelope and the increased HVAC performance, your building becomes super efficient. It drops down to like twenty percent of what you currently are utilizing or even less energy usage. And because we reduce the energy so much, we have the opportunity to actually bring some solar panels into this project to help offset some electrical costs as well. Looking at the site plans, we analyzed where we could potentially put solar panels on this site. Naturally, the first choice you look at are the roofs. The problem with the roofs that we're running into is one fat weight issue again. We put a whole bunch of solar panels on the roofs. We start exceeding that ten percent threshold, which means now our building needs to be upgraded seismically. Secondly. Yes.
Could you orient people to the streets?
Oh, I'm sorry. So you see here's Bay Street right here along the side. So this is the, the level one entry. And here's the level two entry to city hall and Prospect Street is over here on the right hand side. Everybody see that kind of oriented? Okay, right. Thank you, Steve. So back to the solar panels. So aside from the weight issue, the other problem that we're looking at with roofs mounted panels. Is that they require these brackets to be installed. So every single one of these bolts is now a hole through your brand new roof. Every single one of those holes is a potential leak point and we try to minimize those at all costs. Uh, leak points are a pain in the butt for, um, maintenance, obviously. So if we wanted to take the roof panels, the solar panels off the roof, we wondered where else could we put them? So naturally we thought, well, what about on the ground? So we looked at doing some solar canopies like you see here. They are, um, mounted on the ground, so they are easy to maintain. So you have access to the solar panels themselves. They can provide potential shade for some vehicles and there's no new penetrations in your brand new roof. So looking at the site, same orientation, we had a few different locations that we looked at for the solar panels. Um, over top of the parking stalls, right, uh, basically adjacent to the building. You've got the other stalls over here where the police park. And the last option is over top of the pump house and generator, um, where you see here. We determined that this was the best solution because it's, we can utilize the roof structure of the pump house to support some solar panels and then do a smaller canopy to cover the rest of the square footage needed for, um, the full array. Um, I even went down to the site on, uh, December 21st, so that the lowest sun day of the year to, to make sure that the, our, the building over here didn't actually cast a shadow on the future solar panels. We wanted to make sure that we weren't going to be losing efficiencies, um, in the event of some low angled sun. Good news is the solar panels stay exposed to the sun every day throughout the entire year. So with all of that combined, um, we then had a cost estimator working with us to put all these numbers together into one big, uh, project cost. Now this cost estimate is quite, uh, complex. So I'm going to try to break it down a little bit into the easier components. The vertical columns here are kind of breaking out the different, uh, components of the building. So you've got your exterior options, all the different siding options that we had looked at. You've got your exterior envelope insulation options. So we looked at different levels of insulation. Exterior roof options. So we looked at the metal roof, we looked at the shingles, we looked at, um, how much insulation goes on top, under the shingles. Uh, mechanical options, solar panel options, and then finally the electrical service and lighting systems, uh, for the, for the site as well. And this very first column that we're looking at here, kind of explains the costs associated with how each component adds up to their total value. Um, so the direct cost that you see here is what the contractor would typically pay, uh, to have that product basically on his doorstep. And you add a markup here to get to what the total cost that you would pay to have that product installed. Now this markup seems high, but I'll break it down for you. So it's easy to understand. The markup contains a pretty decent scope contingency. Because this is a existing building, we don't necessarily know what we're going to find when we start pulling siding off the building. We start pulling the roofing off the building. So we want to make sure that we have a contingency built in there to cover us for the unexpected. We have, uh, additional, uh, percentages for phasing or off, or off hour work. We want to make sure that when this construction project is happening, that city hall can maintain its operations unaffected. So whether we have to do work after hours or we have to simply phase it, so that way we can adjust people's seedings within the building. We've got general conditions from the contractor, their overhead and profit. And then we even included escalation, um, factoring a 6% escalation per year with this project starting construction early next year. And all of that added up gives us 104% markup on the contractor's fee. So all these prices that you see are what it would cost to install with quite a bit of safety built in. I won't go through every single number. I'll just kind of give you a summary at the end, but, um, you can see that we've got our Sembrant lap siding, its cost here. You've got the exterior brick options to reseal the brick, overhead doors. We want to replace the doors on the outside because those are leaking as well. The clock tower, that's obviously a big, a big critical item there. Um, we're going to replace the clock tower within a, a digital system. So that way all four clock faces say the same time every single day versus having some say different times. Um, an exterior canopy down at one of the entrances to help mitigate some of the water infiltration in the building. The envelopes, so this is the, uh, insulation for the roof and the walls to bring it up to code minimum. Our roofing, our shingles to remove the existing structure, the existing shingles and add in the new shingles, the cost for that. We've got our HVAC system, the cost for the HVAC system replacement, solar panels and the solar panel canopy. And then finally the electrical system and LED upgrades. All of that added up together for the total construction cost of a little bit over $5 million for the whole project. So this is kind of a, a big nutshell of everything that we have gone through in the last six months, uh, for this project. Is there any questions that I can, I, I can dive back into and elaborate on?
And remember we're at 30% design here.
Yes.
The purpose is to this evening, bring you, bring you guys up to speed where we're at, the materials and the process. And then with your concurrence or heads nodding this evening, we, we have the money in the budget to finish the design. Uh, and that we would finish this design, uh, up later this year at mid biennial review. Uh, when we have the final numbers and the bid specs complete, uh, potentially we go out to bid late this year or the first part of next year, um, on this project. So it's kind of. Go ahead.
Just one clarification, that five million was the construction cost. So there's some additional soft construction administration that'll be, you know, add roughly a million, half million to a million on top of that. So.
Yeah. Nearly a six million dollar project. So council member Rosa Pepe and then council member Lucarelli.
Just real quickly on the solar panels, uh, what type of return are we looking at, uh, on that, uh, financially or even maybe it's an electrical?
Yep. So solar panels have a 15 to 17 year payback for the system that we have good installed. So again, their lives, their lifespan will exceed the payback duration.
What sort of, if, if I may just follow on to that, what, what sort of, uh, payback do you get while they're functional? Uh, annually for?
Correct. I, I don't have the exact number, but it's, it's about 30% of your electric bill, um, gets covered per month right now.
Jason, why don't we, uh, see if Morgan can join into this conversation, a guy who I think kind of does some of this for a living?
Sure.
Councilor Lucarelli, why don't you fire your question?
Okay. I, I think that the solar panels, that if that photo is indicative of what this would look like, that that would be atrocious. Uh, what is the point of having the building be a landmark and having it look what it, what it's like? When you have something that looks like the old timey, what? Drive-in theaters or I don't know what you would call that, but it is very unattractive. And I really am not sure about, um, I'd like to see more, um, studies about how much payback there would actually be from that kind of solar panel. Um, I think it's horrible.
Yeah. I'm going to push back on you there. It's not going to look like this and it, it will cover the roof over the existing building that we have. And that's the rea, the reason we didn't go with location two or even location one is we didn't, we were trying to get it away from the building and, and not be up married next to the building, but they're, they're, they provide a, you know, a great deal of electricity and when, when we're going to be drawing much more electricity than, than we were, we would before. So council member Clausen?
Yeah, I'm wondering, you know, when I looked at that originally Cindy, I agree, but then I'm encouraged by the presentation here where they decided to not do covers over the parking lot. So they won't stand out like a sore thumb. But what I was going to suggest is that maybe as part of this next phase, if we could just have a a very rudimentary artist rendition of what it might look like, just so that we have a, a better understanding. Because I agree, I, I'm for solar panels. I think it's a great idea. I just don't want it to detract from the, the beauty of the building.
Yeah. Let me jump in here, John. I think in essence, it's, it's, it isn't going to look any different than just like a new cover over the existing old pump house. Cause we're just going to be covering up the, the existing shed and my can lever over a little bit. So I don't think you would notice it. It isn't going to be like this kind of freestanding, you know, uh, A and W drive-in looking thing. It's going to be more of a, it's just going to look like just a, a new roof basically over the existing water facilities.
Mark, I, I agree with you, but I think it would be nice just to relieve any angst that we might have is if we could just put together a quick artist rendition, mainly what's it going to look like from the street view? Both coming to the town and probably coming down Kitzab Street would be great.
Yeah, absolutely.
And, um, uh, council people will, will also, you know, do a, a study demonstration to talk about, uh, glare and that sort of thing. Cause we do have some residences nearby and I think we've got this at a place where we'll be successful.
Certainly the commercial building to the south of it, that's for sure.
Right. And I think actually if you removed that photo, that would be the very first thing that would improve the presentation.
It does spread right.
Oh boy.
Council member Chang, you have a question?
Yeah, I have a tangential question, not about the solar, which, which I personally like, but I also appreciate how it looks to others. Um, at one time we spoke about, um, just expanding city hall. So do we know what that timeframe has been put off to? Is it like going to be in our lifetime, do we think?
Well, you know, when I, five years ago, when I first took office, Mr. Rice did, uh, a body of work for us. And what is now costing $6 million was $3 million then. And adding on to city hall was $6 million. So I think you could extrapolate that it's $12 million to add on to city hall and to do the body of work we're talking about. That alone is daunting. The biggest challenge adding on to city hall is how far we're under parked. And I believe we did a report at that time and, and the, the number in my head stick, the six in my head is about 60 stalls. So if we add on to this building, we have to meet our current, our own parking standards for this building. It's cost prohibitive to add on to this building. It, it's, uh, that's why we're, we, uh, we're bringing forward just weatherizing this facility and living within the walls that we have. Our future space needs are going to need to come from a, a separate building with, whether it's on the gravel lot across the street where we're parking over, or you know, over a parking structure. But we, we looked at a site, we own property out at Tremont, maybe that's a police station and a court someday. Or in the community center is part of that equation too. So we've got a number of options that I think are going to be far less expensive to us to, uh, to develop additional office space versus trying to add on to this building, which I think is going to be cost prohibitive.
And, and we've also learned with this 12 months of COVID under our belt, that building space needs in the future may change dramatically.
But that, that is true. And as we, um, flexible, we used to have your own office or your own cubicle and we're definitely moving towards flexible workspace. You don't own that space. You have a device. Many, most of our staff have devices just like you do now, and we have docking stations everywhere. Yeah. You show up and you know, you take whatever offices available and I, that is going to be become more and more prevalent in the future here at city hall. We just, we can't afford to have everybody have their own personal space. Council member Deener?
So, um, I share the concerns and, and the observations about the photovoltaic panels. Um, I, I think though, that when you looked at the, kind of the casual rendering that was given already, there won't be much of a visual impact, certainly not from street level. Uh, and from the building above, the visual impact really is just city hall. So, um, I'm, I'm confident that that will look good. Um, but I did not like the A and W version either. So, um, I, I share the comments as well. The one thing that I, I'd like to make sure that we have, uh, robust participation in is the selection of the new clock face and what that looks like. Um, that's been, you know, that is the icon of the icon. And so, um, we would like to, I would like to make sure that there's a lot of participation and what that might look like in the future.
Well, I would say that just by operating digitally is one thing, keeping the face as close to what we have today is important.
Yeah. And it's my.
Excuse me.
That we can, we can achieve that. We can have a LED face that looks exactly like this, this space.
Or I mean, I guess my comment is, are we branded to that face?
Kind of the direction, when I've checked in before, particularly with the finance committee, I was, when we brought back elements that were different than what we have. You know, we're, we're, we, the attempt, we've been attempting to make this no different than it looks today. Just, just modernizing it.
Yes, we always have room to sit down and talk about it, but you know, as you just pointed out, that's the icon of the icon.
Right.
Council member Lucarelli?
And we are still going to have a chime system. We're going to have a digitalized or whatever system that we can play music from that clock tower. That works.
No, that got, that got removed Cindy. No, I'm joking. I'm joking.
I'm, I'm headed over to your office.
It's very fortunate to point out at this point that Mr. Dorsey is not on the council.
Yeah. Great, three takeaways here. We need s- some renderings of, uh, of the, uh, the solar panel structure and what they'll look like. Some ren, some examples of what the clock faces are going to look like. Assurances that, uh, not only does the clock work, uh, but that there's a new chime system. So I don't know that that's in your, your cost estimates yet either, but they're about, uh, $20,000, I understand.
Did, did we just buy a new chime system?
No, we've.
Let's not talk about that.
Yeah, we bought speakers and an amplifier.
I see.
Mayor, I might, I might offer a couple of, uh, wrap up comments though, that I think are important for tonight. We are done with this. Uh, obviously you will give us the, the, uh, permission to move forward or not. If you do, um, I want you to know that we will have two more cost estimates as the work progresses and still room for choices. Um, so you can expect those. Another thing that will happen is when we get into the, between 30 and 60%, we will be looking at, um, the interior scope of the building and assuming that, um, it is occupied. Um, what kind of disruption, um, it might cause and formulate a plan so that we can include it in the bid documents and we, um, we've been anticipated doing this in a way that is, is not disruptive to the public visiting the building or, um, your staff who are working in there. So, um, if we were to move forward, you know, m- moving from April, uh, you know, we would be, you know, working for, um, uh, three or four more months on the documents and getting them to 60% for another estimate and then 100%, um, which is the ad ready, uh, place. And, um, that could happen. It, it, end of August, September 1st, think the labor day timeframe, right around there. So I think, um, you know, what we tried to do tonight and what we've tried to do with this process is take into consideration this amazing asset that you have that, um, needs protection, but, um, we can't really afford the very best of everything. We have to make wise choices that will last a long time. We have to make choices that are smart with, um, what's going on with electrification, state mandates for, um, energy usage and those kinds of things. I think it's, it's a great time to be considering these kinds of things for your city hall. So, um, thank you for, for having us tonight. And, uh, if there are any last questions, we'll take them.
And before, before we go here, as I'm just kind of looking for a head nodding, um, that we're going to, you know, advance, continue to advance these concepts and designs and we'll bring back, you know, you gave me some marching orders on, on what you want to see some, some better renderings of. So seen two thumbs up from John and, um, okay. Beck and Fred, you guys comfortable with what you saw tonight? Yeah. Okay. We're going to continue. Jay? Yep. All right. Wonderful. I appreciate that. And we'll continue this work and there'll be another check in here in a few months as, uh, as we get closer and, and, uh, we'll bring back some renderings of what things will really look like. So John?
Just a quick comment, Steve. I've been impressed with your presentation. Uh, you guys did a, a great job of obviously looking into the different options and then presenting the options to us. So good job. Thank you.
Yeah. I, I commend Steve and his, his group. Um, I'm working a cup with a couple different of his teams from this on city hall and the community center, and they've been an absolute pleasure. Uh, they, they do, uh, stellar work. And, and I couldn't be happier with what they're doing for us.
Thank you, John. Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, thank you guys.
Thank you.
All right. See you. And, uh, we have no guests for the last item, Brandy. It's, it's the Nick Bond Show and he's going to talk to us about the shoreline master program periodic update. We've all been. and he's gonna talk to us about the Shoreline Master Program Periodic Update. We've all been waiting anxiously for this item.
And and actually, that is incorrect. We do have a guest, and Carrie Sully is here from my department. And um, she has taken a leadership role in our Shoreline Master Program update, and uh, this is one of those items where she's so involved in it that she's going to give a much better pres- presentation than I can. Um, I'll just say that our tentative schedule right now on completing the Shoreline Master Program update is to bring this to you at your first March meeting for uh, a preliminary adoption. Then the SMP needs to go to the Department of Ecology for approval and then comes back to you in June for final adoption. Uh, in case there are changes required by the Department of Ecology. So um, with that said, Carrie is going to walk you through uh, the changes and our process to date, and Carrie, please take it away.
Thank you. Um, as Nick said, this is something that our department has been working on for quite a while, um, for about a year and a half, actually. Um, this draft update to the SMP went to land use last week. Um, it went to a public hearing um, at the Planning Commission at the beginning of this month. And what we've been working on is basically a required update to our Shoreline Master Program, which is required every eight years. This was not a comprehensive update. Um, the comprehensive rewrite of the SMP was done in 2013. So this is just basically a requirement that we go through every eight years, review our SMP and adopt, adopt updates that are required by ecology, um, most of which are broken down in into um, three different categories, basically. Um, there's a checklist that was provided in your packet that shows um, everything that ecology has required us to update, and these are usually um, by year, a number of laws, um, statutes that have been adopted at the state level, which we have to incorporate into our SMP. New uh, things for, you know, different cost thresholds for permits, um, other rules under the Shoreline Management Act. And so you can see where in each one of of these categories, we have adopted new or revised language into our SMP. And I've also noted in the red line version of the document in your packet where each one of these has been incorporated. So I won't go through each one of these unless somebody wants me to go through um, one of those one by one. Most of these are very minor, and they're simply updating them in accordance with state law. But um, the majority of the changes that we made, other than these that were ecology required, were we wanted to make sure that we had updated our SMP to be consistent with our own internal um, references, policies and plans. Because since 2013, we've done quite a number of things. Um, there's been a number of comprehensive plan updates. We've completely rewritten um, our zoning code and changed all of our zoning designations. Um, we have done a couple of sub area plans. Um, there's been a number of things that have, in our critical areas ordinance has also been completely rewritten. And so we had a lot of things in our SMP that had um, references that were completely outdated, didn't exist anymore. And those were creating a lot of problems for applying the SMP, especially when it came to our downtown shoreline. And so a lot of what we did just um, consisted of bringing our SMP up to date with our existing plans, codes and policies. Um, and we also wanted to make sure that when we had this opportunity, we tried to revise and streamline um, what we had in our SMP to make it easier for the user, for the reader, for developers, and just for anyone who is using our permit processes to um, you know, go through this and have a simpler time applying our permits where needed. Um, to have a, a simple and understandable development process. You know, for example, we had in our shoreline permit process that you, you could have an administrative variance that, which is fine, but it didn't actually say what the process was. It just said you could have it. So one of the things, and and I'll go through this later, is just, you know, we actually put a process in place so that you actually could apply for it, and you know, here's the review process, here's how it's, it's considered, you know, here are the criteria you have to meet. Here's how it's approved. There were a number of gaps in our exist, in our old SMP where there were things like this, that which for some reason, you know, simply had not been filled out. And so we wanted to make sure that we caught all of those gaps, um, filled in and streamlined and just um, made sure that we had corrected and updated anything like that, where it had not been done correctly or completely before. Um, the other thing, and this is the most, this is the most um, comprehensive or substantive issue in our SMP. We were concerned about the issue of sea level rise, and this was the, an issue that ecology really encouraged all local jurisdictions to look at this time around. Um, sea level rise has never before been a required component of shoreline master programs, but it is going to be something that ecology is going to require everyone to look at in future. Um, and so what we did as part of this update was uh, the city hired Herrera Consultants to come in and do a comprehensive study of our downtown shoreline, um, which is, and the, and the shoreline jurisdiction, by the way, extends from the ordinary high water mark 200 feet back. So it's, it's a very limited area, but it's, it's very important because right now, along our downtown shoreline, we're already seeing problems. We already have problems with um, king tides, with um, flooding from excessive rainfall. Our stormwater system is easily overwhelmed. We have a lot of low spots where, you know, we, we already see flooding. We already see sandbagging, things like that in our system. And as we continue to see um, potential effects of climate change and sea level rise over the next few decades, these things are only expected to get worse, and we need to be proactive. And so um, the report that Herrera pre- prepared for us did show that we have a number of areas in our downtown shoreline that are already problematic and some areas that are going to get worse. And so we are going to use this document not only to update our SMP, which we've done here with new policies, new regulations and some direction for mapping and guidance for the future, but we hope that this will also guide our future downtown planning and development outside of just the shoreline areas. But in downtown in general, maybe also guide um, you know, how we deal with our stormwater system in general as well. So it, that has a, a larger overall applicability. But in any case, um, the, the guidance and recommendations that we received from Herrera were incorporated into several brand-new sections into our SMP to, to handle how we would deal with flood management and climate change and sea level rise for new and revised development along our shoreline. So those are the main components of what we were looking at and trying to incorporate into this um, limited update. And I can go through um, the document and just kind of touch on some of the highlights. And then if anyone has any um, questions, I can deal with that, those issues at the end. Does anyone have any questions they would like you to just bring up at this point?
Should Carrie about, Fred, go ahead.
Can you just elaborate for a sentence or two about sea level rise in terms of um, let's see if I can ask my question. Um, like over 50 years, how much is it expected to rise? Are we talking about a po- possibly a foot or six inches? Do we, do we have an idea of?
We do. No, we didn't look at the, at 50 years. Um, that's a bit out of the range of this planning period. We looked at 20 to 25 years. And the document, by the way, is, is online um, on the city's website. We, we have that report and its findings and recommendations on our Shoreline Master Program update page, and I'm happy to, to send you the link for that so that you can take a look at, at the more detailed information there. But basically, we can't, Herrera can, and the science can't predict that exactly. There is a low and a high range of probability of sea level rise. So at the, at the low end, we're looking at about, I think it was about four inches. At the high end, we could be looking at six to eight inches within the planning period, and that's really significant, no matter what. I mean, because when, when, when we see areas that are, that are already, you know, having problems at high tide or, or in significant storm effects or significant storm events, put even just a few more inches in that. And you know, we're, we're looking at, at some significant property damage potentially, or roadways being blocked during storms, possibly with overtopping. And that's something that we need to plan for, and not just us, but you know, Bay Street is, is a state road, and that's something that Washdott needs to be planning for. And we did provide that information to Washdott and to um, the um, the uh, Annapolis, the wastewater treatment plant. They need to be aware of that too. They need to be planning for that. So it's, you know, it's not just development, private development, and you know, people see walls and things like that, but we need to be planning for infrastructure and utilities, even with just a few inches of sea level rise.
John?
Yeah, I, I read through this. I don't know. I mean, if others need you to read through or point out things, that's great. I guess just a couple of questions that I had. Um, one, it, you've mentioned, you touched on the fact that sea level rising in the city should be doing these things, developing plans and examples of development, that sort of thing for our users. Um, I guess my first question is, are you guys prepared to be able to do that work, to develop these um, suggested schemes or processes for development? And the second one is just kind of an overall, there's, you spend a fair amount of um, time talking about parking and heaven forbid, I should be one that is trying to defend parking, but the reality is, is that there is a parking need. Downtown, we're talking about a parking structure, for example, as part of the community center. And I'm not quite sure if it's outside of the reach of the shoreline or not, but there is going to always be a certain amount of parking for our merchants and for the residents that live in the downtown area. And I wanted to make sure that those things were taken into consideration as well.
Okay, let me, let me answer those in order. Um, with regard to planning and mapping to um, respond or to adapt to sea level rise concerns, yes, I believe that as a department, as a city, we can respond to those issues. We, we've included um, requirements in the SMP that, a couple of those are future-based. We need to map areas where we, and Herrera has done some of that. But we um, we, and we can, we will have those available for public review. But we also need to provide areas um, on a map that show where we see most likely that we're going to have problems in the future. That's not a problem. We can provide that information to the public. One of the issues that we saw um, that will require some additional research and guidance, and this may require the assistance of a consultant is um, sediment uh, drift, where we have um, contaminated sediment areas that um, those may start to become infiltrated by seawater as sea level rises, and those may start to shift and move their position and to contaminate other areas. And we want to map those because when people come in to develop or redevelop those areas, those could be disturbed and result in um, groundwater or seawater pollution. So we want to have those maps available for people as a resource. And so, yes, I think that the um, most of what we're looking at in terms of providing an informational base, that is something that the city can respond to and provide.
I think you were also referencing some design examples of, you know, how to deal with some of the sea level rising. And to me, that was, I appreciate mapping all of this, and I think that's great basic information that we should have available. But to me, there's a bit of time necessary to do these uh, design examples, recommendations. It just seems like a bit of work, and I'm not opposed to it. I just wanna make sure that you folks are um, have a kind of on your work plan and something that you guys can deal with.
Yeah, and and I actually don't wanna speak for Nick, you know, as the department director. I don't want to set his work plan. Um, but I think, I think, I feel that that is actually part of what we should be doing in terms of long-range planning for the city is exactly this. In response to, our consultant has identified that this is, this is an issue we're going to have to be responding to over the next 20 years. Here is something that, like it or not, it's going to hit us. And we need to provide this, this assistance to our citizens, to our developers. Um, in terms of, we're gonna have to start elevating buildings, maybe elevating roadways. We need to provide them with assistance to understand this issue and how to respond to it, how to design for it.
And
And in the parking, oh, sorry, go ahead, Nick.
I was just gonna add, in the 2021 budget, we did include some additional money, and we are uh, planning to update our flood code regulations. And so there's new FEMA maps, and there's also some uh, issues with our flood code that were identified as part of this process that were recommended uh, for updates. So that, that's something that will probably start middle of this year and be completed into 2022. And so those are our, our next steps in terms of uh, implementing some of the recommendations related to sea level rise. And then Carrie, go ahead with the parking response.
Beck has a question, actually.
Yeah, I was just gonna follow up on what Carrie was just saying. Um, Nick gave us a bit of an overview at Economic Development a couple of weeks ago with regards to, we were um, looking at the Community Events Center and getting a, an update on that and that three-legged stool. And Nick had some interesting comments about Bay Street, and I was hoping that you could tell full council about that because just Economic Development heard that.
Sure, um, and I'll, I'll answer Councilmember Clausen's second, the second part of his question real quickly as well. Um, we, obviously, any parking facilities that exist currently within the shoreline are allowed to stay. The shoreline generally does not allow parking, um, except as it is ancillary to a, a primary use within the Shoreline Master Program. And so any, any structure, parking structures or, or facilities of that sort, um, they either need to be underneath the building uh, in the shoreline area or um, upland of that 200-foot mark. So we're, we're definitely looking at that as part of our downtown sub-area plan and planned action EIS. Um, but, but parking, if it's, if we have a new apartment building going down, downtown, you can put the parking associated with that building in the shoreline, but you can't build like a commercial park and park, parking lot or um, park and ride facility. And as far the, as for the discussion related to Bay Street, one of the challenges we've identified as part of the Community Events Center project is that we're designing uh, the three legs of this stool, and we, we have a current Bay Street road elevation, and that is um, in the area of the worst flooding in downtown. And so, um, and I just pulled up the sea level rise report that Carrie had mentioned, and the, there's a 50% probability of exceedance uh, of current sea levels um, of, of a half a foot by 2040 and 2.1 feet uh, by uh, the year 2100. Um, and those, uh, that's the low end of the range. And so six inches is the low end of the range, and 1.1 feet is the high end of the range for 2040. So Bay Street is already below the flood elevation, and we're adding uh, an additional six uh, six to 13 inches to that. And so one of the concerns about designing the Community Events Center is that we are going to, we, we need to design it to an elevation. Um, and currently, the sidewalks are not at the right elevation long-term for that, that building. If we later come in and do a project to improve Bay Street, um, we are going to be elevating those sidewalks, and suddenly the, the grades between the new buildings that are being talked about and our existing street are not going to line up. And while the Community Events Center could put in sidewalks at a future elevation, you're gonna end up with curbs that are two feet tall along Bay Street, which is not desirable because people won't be able to get out of their cars. So one of the recommendations that we've had is that if we um, assuming that everything moves forward, which I, I feel like there's a real coming together between the bank and the private entity and the city at this point in terms of, of reaching and understanding. And I think that uh, maybe the next step is a agreement between the bank and the private developer concerning parking for bank employees. And I'm, I'm hopeful that that will uh, develop in the near future. If that occurs, I, I think the city is going to need to step in and come up with a plan for the three blocks of Bay Street from Frederick around to Robert Geiger Street that look at elevating the existing road surface and the sidewalks and streetscape improvements. And not only is that needed from a sea level rise perspective, but you're likely going to see different architects on um, on either two or three of the, all three of the projects. And so having that c- common design language for our streetscape is going to be something that ties the entire area together. Likewise, with the proposed hill climb and coming off of Prospect Street and going down uh, and crossing Bay Street at Orchard with a, a kind of an elaborate main crossing of, of the road in that location. Um, you know, you're talking about potentially putting in landscape medians or other streetscaping there to really make it comfortable for pedestrians and safe for pedestrians. And so the thought is that we need to do at least a preliminary design for what that road will look And so the thought is that we need to do at least a preliminary design for what that road will look like long term. And try to start identifying the elevations of, of those roadways so that these buildings, buildings can be designed at the proper elevation. We'd hate to, I, I, I think the numbers thrown around for building the three projects, the, the Kitsap Bank, the Community Center and this private development are $100 million. And you don't want to spend that kind of money and not have it at the correct street elevation.
So needless to say, we've asked for a scope what that would cost. And I'm hopeful that potentially that the private developer and the bank would share in that expense potentially with us like we did with the other master planning because it benefits all three. We're not going to do all of downtown, but we need to know where the street's going to be, what the, what the street profile is going to look like, street lighting and, and all of those elements so that it all ties in together.
I, I have visions after I heard Nick talk at Economic Development. I had visions of, of like a three-block speed bump going through downtown.
Yeah. It'll have ramps on both ends, yeah.
Yeah, a three-block-long speed lump or speed bump. Yes, I, that was my vision as well when I listened to this discussion.
Yeah.
But it's something needed.
All right. So we've derailed Carrie's presentation.
No, that was actually, that was actually a good derailment because that actually shows, you know, as, as I was saying, we're using the Herrera report for more than one thing. We're only using it for the 20-year time period, planning period for the SMP. But as Nick is saying, we're using it for a lot more, you know, trying to see how that can inform the planning that we're doing for the Community Events Center, for other downtown development. And you know, that takes it out to 2040 or more years. So that's, that, it, it, it's a good document and it's very timely that it was prepared when it was. So moving on through the SMP, I can just scroll through this and kind of go over some of the highlights of, of the changes that we've made here. And I'm going to start on page 57 of the packet, which is section 1.6. These are the references to the plans, regulations and information sources that were incorporated into the SMP. So we've just updated all of the things that were incorporated into the document. The most important one was the CAO. Our CAO was moved out of chapter 16 quite some time ago. But unfortunately, until, or chapter 18, I'm sorry, until we, until we actually changed the reference here into Title 20, which is where it is now, we were actually forced to go back and use the, the criteria in Title 18 because that's still what we refer to. So this is a big problem. This is something that we've been needing to do for quite some time. And this is going to be a lot better for our enforcement of our environmental regulations. We've also updated the references to our current comprehensive plan and to the most recent Blackjack Creek Watershed Assessment and Protection and Restoration Plan. So all of our documents by reference will now be updated. Going to page 74 in your plan. We've put in a new couple of general overall master plan goals for flood hazard reduction, climate change and sea level rise. These are new, just showing that now these are now important issues that we want to deal with in our SMP from now on to protect our coastal resources, to protect development, damage to private and public improvements and infrastructure and the mobilization of contaminated sediments. And so, you know, we have prepared policies and regulations further in our plan to deal with these overarching goals.
And, and those page numbers are on your clean version in your packet, not the redline version, if you're trying to follow along. Also, CAO is Critical Areas Ordinance in case you weren't clear on that.
I'm going from my redline version in the packet, Nick. I don't.
It seems to be following along with the redline, so.
Well, my, my apologies. I went to page 74 and are, are you talking about the page numbers of the PDF or the page numbers of the actual SMP?
I'm going with the page numbers of the packet.
Okay, that was my problem.
Yeah, sorry for any confusion there. So page 79 of the packet, we start to get into changes to our existing flood hazard reduction policies. And we added some additional language in here that were recommendations from Herrera about more that we should put in here about discouraging future non-water dependent development in areas that are lying at or below the 100-year flood elevation. Trying to reduce development that would require flood hazard reduction measures. Making sure that we do not create new lots or tracks that are within the 100-year flood hazard area unless they're going to be for restoration, things like that. And here in, on page, that's page 80 of your packet. This is, I think, where Councilmember Clausen was talking about one thing he was concerned. SMP GP 20 about maintaining for public reference and planning a coastal flood risk map, which has our elevation areas and includes a future projection of any areas which have at least a 50% probability of being flooded within 20 years. So we want to, we want to create this and have this available for the public to use for planning purposes. And that, that's again, is something that Herrera recommended, but that's just, that just seems like a good service for the city to provide. So again, all of these are new, all of these come out of the Herrera report. And all of these are focused on our long-term response for coastal sea level rise for our downtown shoreline primarily. And these continue on the next page, page 81, in terms of our regulations. GDR 13. This is, this is something that is, that is new and this is something that is going to require us to when, when someone comes in for a permit downtown on a site that, for redevelopment, new development, anyone running to get a permit is going to have to determine and disclose whether there's any sediment material on that site, including fill, which is contaminated and might require remediation to prevent the spread of contamination that could be mobilized due to coastal flooding. And there may not be any on most sites, but on some, we know that there is. And if not, if, if you have nothing on your site or if it is not going to be disturbed by redevelopment, then that's all we require you to say. But if there is, if there is contaminated sediment that is going to be at risk of mobilization, we're going to require a remediation plan as a condition of the shoreline permit review. And that is, that is something that is new in our permit review system. We think that's going to be really important to prevent both groundwater, upland and seawater contamination. And again, this, this was one of Herrera's recommendations. Did anyone have any questions so far?
Okay.
I'll just point out that this was also discussed at Land Use Committee as well. So it looks like many of us have gotten a preliminary briefing on this.
Yes.
And part of mine was on page 86 where SMP GP 38, where the city should create specific development and building design standards for downtown. That was, that was just another piece of what jumped out at me. As far as you guys being ready to do all this, there's more later, but.
And that was my next, that was where my next stop was going to be. That is page 86 of your packet. And so that, that's, this is the meat of our response, our management policies and development regulations on climate change and sea level rise. And so this is what Councilmember Clausen is talking about, SMP GP 38. The city should create specific development and building design standards for the downtown shoreline to address issues related to coastal hazards and impacts from future sea level rise. And these would include not just, not just the actual sea level rise, but coastal flooding, earthquake liquefaction, tsunami risk, saltwater intrusion, the mobilization of contaminated sediments and impacts to geologic hazard areas. And so, yes, we do not have these in place at this time. So this is a directive to the city, to our department, to Public Works, to start developing these and to incorporate them. As, you know, the, and these wouldn't just be in our SMP. These would be public work standards. These would be road standards. These would be building design standards that would go into our zoning code and our building codes. So this is something that is going to require development over a period of time, but this at least sets the direction. And to be honest, this might need to go into more than just the 200 feet that are within our shoreline master program, but this is a start.
Carrie?
Nick, do you want to add anything to that?
Carrie?
Jay's got a question, too.
I'm sorry. Jake?
My question is, when we put something like this in the plan going to DOE, do they come back and, and do us a timeframe or expect a timeframe for us to have them develop the plans?
No, they don't. And also, I knew that this was going to be, we don't want to create, I don't know if this is the right word, but I didn't want to create an unfunded mandate. And I, that is why it says should and not shall. This is something that the city should do it. And we have this information. And now that we know that we have these problems, we should react to it. We should create these resources and these standards to guide development and to assist people in developing buildings that are going to withstand these risks. How we are going to respond to it and how quickly we can respond to it and in what detail. We have other, the city is going to have a lot of things on its plate over the next few years. Budget is always going to be an issue. So should covers a lot of ground. We will do it as we can, as our budget permits, as our workload permits. And no, ecology is not going to come back and go, where is this? You know, next year or two years from now.
Thank you. Right. And I, I can just add to that, that, you know, we're, we're just about to start on our 2024 comprehensive plan update. And so as part of that, we're going to identify a number of action items. And so this is something that needs to be worked on as part of that comprehensive plan update and will likely come in the years after we adopt. So 2025 through, you know, 2028 and prior to, when's our next update deadline? Carrie, is that 2030?
Every eight years.
Yeah. So this is probably in the five to six-year range in terms of when we're, when we would potentially be able to start working on major changes. I think I mentioned the floodplain regulations. That is a, something we will do in the near term that we could point to that shows how we are working towards this policy. But there's certainly other things that could be done aside from just the, the flood regulations.
And my comment was, you know, I think these are all things that we should be doing and it's be great to have them. It just jumped out at me as kind of a heavy lift. It's not something that you could do easily overnight. So that's why I just wanted to question it.
And that's, that's one reason that in the section below, which is GDR 39, during each periodic review of the SMP, which again is every eight years, that's where we have a requirement to evaluate our building and design standards and to revise them as needed. So every eight years, you know, eight years from now, basically it's saying, hopefully by that time, we will have responded, as Nick is saying, to what we have in place right now and we'll have something better. And then eight years from now, we'll look at that and we'll see what we need to do to make it better again as needed. And then we'll respond to that from there. So we're on, we're on a fairly slow path of review and respond without a mandate that it, that something be in place by a certain specific deadline. Does that sufficiently respond to your concern?
Oh, yeah. And it's, it's not a major concern. It was more a question, just making sure that we all recognize the work that's going to be involved in pulling that together. So, and I agree, it's a work in progress, but it's always the most difficult is the first version of it. It's easy to modify later dates if you have something to work from, but it's the first one is, is this the lift?
Yes, and I agree that, you know, that, this may not all be able to be done in-house without the assistance of, of a consultant. We may, we may need assistance there. Okay, so let's see, moving on. Page 88 of your packet, we made some revisions to the shoreline use table. The biggest one was we added a, a line for commercial water or water enjoyment, commercial use. We've had the definition of water enjoyment, commercial use in our definitions at the end of the SMP. So that's not new, but for some reason, th- this is one of the strange omissions I was talking about at the beginning. We didn't actually include that as an allowed use in our use table. Water enjoyment, commercial use just simply means it's something that the public can enjoy for recreation or other passive or active recreation. And it, it can, it can include things as kind of offbeat as, as you wouldn't really think about publicly accessed restaurants or a convention center, which is one reason that we put that in there. We wanted to make sure that the South Kitsap Community Events Center would actually qualify on the waterfront as a water enjoyment, commercial use or that, that components of it, if there happened to be a restaurant or a coffee shop, some other component in the mixed use, that that would not be prohibited from being part of that facility. Just because it wasn't included in this, in this table. And also there, there are other things that, that could be coming along downtown as part of redevelopments, other things that could be going on that wouldn't have been allowed under this use table simply because this line wasn't included. So this is important that we put that in there. Water-related means that you're, you need to be on the water. Like a, or you should be on the water, like a kayak rental would be water-related. So you don't really have to be on the water, but it makes sense that you have a kayak rental shop, rent the kayak, put it in the water. Water-dependent means you absolutely must be on the water. A boat building shop, a marina facility, that must be on the water. So those are the three different categories. And it's, it's really important to be able to have the water enjoyment use as a transitional use between non-water oriented, commercial, there's no reason you'd be on the water. There's no connection to the water, maybe no views, no access. And then the, the type of commercial or mixed-use facilities that really are oriented towards the water and they get people into or using the water. So we think this is going to be a big bonus for the use and redevelopment of the downtown shoreline. And moving on to the next page on the land use table, we also had nothing in the table that addressed mixed use. There, we had commercial uses and we had residential uses, but nothing that addressed where you have non-residential and commercial or industrial uses in the same building or commercial and public, and public use, residential and public, anything like that in the same space. And we wanted to make sure those were allowed. They weren't specifically called out. We didn't want those then by default to become conditional uses because that's the way the Shoreline Management Act interprets it. If it's not actually called out, then it becomes a conditional use. We don't want that to happen. We want to encourage more mixed use downtown. If we're going to have buildings that redevelop, if, if we have residential uses coming in downtown, those are encouraged. And we want to have a supporting commercial use or a public benefit use, a restaurant, a library, a kayak rental facility, other recreational, public benefit uses. They can all go in the same building, parking, things like that. We wanted to make sure we, those were supported in our land use table. Now they are. And then we also wanted to make sure we had a line in here, a couple of lines down about public use. Wasn't addressed in here. We wanted to make sure again that those are also allowed on the waterfront where appropriate. Are there any questions about the land use table?
I guess I have one question down a little bit. And I'm, I'm on page 89 where you've got public use, the barren civic use, government-owned, non-transportation facilities or similarly use. And then I went down into the transportation areas. And there's nothing there for government. It's just all under transportation. And I want to make sure that the passenger ferry program that we have operating down at the waterfront will be able to continue and make improvements. And ultimately, we'd like to make improvements to the the land side use of that facility to provide a better connection between buses and ferry boats. So I wasn't quite sure where that type of facility would fall in there, if it's under just transportation facilities. Or does it need a special designation as a. As a public user, government owned or something of that nature.
Well, the, the ferry absolutely, um, falls in there. It's, it's a water dependent transportation facility. So that is already covered. So you're talking about the upland side of it. So that would be like a bus pickup and drop off.
Yeah, basically where we have now, the buses come down right on the waterfront and they. Pick up and drop off people who are going from buses to boat. So they need a connection. So that's a, a transportation facility that's on the upland.
And that would be a water related transportation facility, because that bus pickup and drop off is to get to. A water dependent transportation facility. So it kind of has to be there. Now a park and ride or a different or parking is a difference. So I'm talking specifically. Bus, dropping you off, who's that ferry?
I'm not thinking of parking. I'm thinking of that bus connection that. We use a general term of multimodal facility so that you can go from one mode to another. And obviously it's going to be water dependent. I see it's there under transportation facilities. But since you brought up and pointed out earlier, um, government owned, I didn't know if there needed to be any kind of a distinction between. A transportation facility and a transportation facility that's government owned. I, I see that it's permitted, but.
We could add an example in the transportation facility section saying water dependent, you know. E G, the ferry, system, you know, the foot ferry, uh, we could add examples here that would not limit, but would give examples of, of existing. Facilities of this sort, just to make it clear, if that would be helpful.
As long as it's clear somewhere in the document, I just didn't see a distinction, but. You know, not only do we have the facility in downtown, we also have the facility in Annapolis, which is part of the city as well. So there's. Two ferry water dependent uses. So that's all.
Okay, understood. Okay. Okay, um, let's see. Um, going down then to page ninety one of the table, we just. We clarified setbacks, um, what building setbacks are for single family residences. Just kind of to, to clarify terminology and make it consistent throughout. The document, we were using setback and buffer sort of indiscriminately throughout here. Just wanted to make that clear. Let's see. Page ninety nine, I, this is kind of important. We wanted, we, we added in here at the top of the page. That certain private views may be protected within overlay districts as provided in title twenty of the city's municipal code. We have the downtown height overlay district. We have the view protection overlay district. And in terms of protecting public views of harbor areas and other vistas, the shoreline management act requires. That, um, heights of buildings and other structures within the shoreline zone be limited to thirty five feet. And if the, um. It, um, if those structures are going to be, um, interfering with the views from a significant number. And I'm quoting a significant number of, um, adjacent or nearby residences. Now you can go over thirty five feet in the shoreline zone if you are not blocking or interfering with views of residences. But I wanted to put in here that there are other things that need to be considered other than just, you know, are you blocking a certain number of views? We do have overlay districts in the downtown areas to consider, because I know that will come up. I know there are a lot of people downtown who are concerned about their private views that are protected in title twenty. And I just wanted to acknowledge, um, that is something that we are aware of and that we will consider as part of S M P review.
Just a question, is there a standard for what the definition of a view is? Because, um, I mean, if you got to see the, where the wa- water touches the land or the ability to see the water. When the hotel went in, um, down Bay Street, we were concerned. Or the neighbors, I guess you would say, up at the condos up on top of Rockwell Hill. Were concerned about their impact and we asked the developer to do kind of a, a s- study to give us an example of what. Would be blocked. And, uh, at the time, we felt that. Yes, the view was impacted if you're standing right on the deck and looking straight down, but. Because that facility is up on such a high elevation. That, yeah, they probably won't see where the water touches the shore, but it's not significant. We allowed them to move forward. So I don't know if, if there's some kind of definition to that or.
There's not in the shoreline management act, which, you know, maybe is unfortunate. It simply says, you know, blocking the view or interfering with the view of, of a significant number of residences. It unfortunately, it doesn't define view and it doesn't also say what is a significant number of residents. Yeah, it's one of those things. So it is, it's actually, you know, maybe more harmful than helpful. But again, but we have to abide by it as best we can. And, you know, there, I, I believe there, there is some case precedent for that. People have, have over the years. Um, since the SMA began in, in the seventies, have brought many, many. Cases to their shoreline management hearings board about, you know, my views and there, there, there is, um, background on this as to what would be probably considered. Blocking views and what is significant and whatever, you know, that kind of thing that we could, we could go on. I'm just not sure, uh, you know, sitting here right now, how to answer that.
Yeah, I appreciate that. And obviously views are like a lightning rod, so. Depended upon the individual's definition of my view, so.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, my main concern here was just to acknowledge that we're not just looking at the SMA. We are also looking at title twenty. Which has additional view restrictions through the overlay districts that we will consider.
And I think that's good for where we are right now.
Right. Okay, um, on page one hundred and three of your packet, as we get into parking. And maybe that was also where, um, council member Clausen had some concerns. Parking is something that our, our S N P did not have very much attention. It, it, it didn't deal with it very much or very well. And it was something that in a previous review of our S N P ecology had said, you might want to put a little bit more, um. Uh, regu- regulatory emphasis on that. You might want to deal with this a little more, because we just noticed it wasn't in there. We're not really sure why we didn't require it before. So we've put both management policies and development regulations in this next round. We have said that. And this is, this is also in the SMA, parking lots and parking within structures, so that would be garage parking. Are not a preferred use in the shoreline jurisdiction. They are not, but they are allowed, um, where no feasible alternative exists. So. And feasible is usually interpreted to mean reasonable. So if you build a, or redevelop a new apartment complex on the waterfront. No one's going to say you need to put your parking two blocks away outside the shoreline jurisdiction. That's just not going to happen. So we are going to, you know, see potentially, um, development on the shoreline. Apartments, mixed use buildings, where the parking is either incorporated in the same building or on surface parking. And we might say, well, if you can, if your site is big enough, maybe move the parking out of the shoreline on the same site as much as possible. But we're not going to be saying move it off the shoreline entirely. If you have to, you know, buy a new site or something like that, that's not going to happen. But i- if someone wants to come along and put in, you know, new paid parking on the shoreline. Or just, you know, for no reason, try to move parking onto the shoreline that's not for a water dependent use. Such as ask for the marina for a boat launch or something like that. This would definitely make it clear that that could not be supported. Um, and, and the next, next policy down makes it clear that we would also support. Exploring options for removing publicly owned parking within the shoreline jur- jurisdiction and try to find ways. To convert that to shoreline public access and other water dependent and water enjoyment uses. And other recreation facilities, simply because, um, parking and especially large open parking lots. Really is not a preferred use, um, in the shoreline jurisdiction. And that's something that ecology encourages us trying to. Try to find a way to reduce overtime. Um, and that's what the development regulations below also support, that we are going to try to have new or redeveloped surface parking areas. Outside the shore, shoreline jurisdiction where feasible. That surface parking as a principal use is not allowed in, in all of the shoreline areas outside of downtown. Downtown is our high intensity use environment, by the way. So all of the other environments that you see here are outside of downtown. And then standalone structured parking, that would be a standalone parking garage, would not be allowed in the shoreline jurisdiction. That would not prevent someone from coming in and building a, um, a building with, um, residential or mixed uses. And having parking be part of that building. So any question on parking?
My question, and I seem to be dominating the conversation, so fellow council members, if you have questions, don't let me dominate. But in the, uh, development regulations, the S U B R fifty three. You say either new or redevelop surface parking and then you have the, where feasible, I'm thinking of. Like the, the Marina Park has a need for, uh, some level of parking. For folk, you know, the community to go down and take advantage of that park is, is it envisioned that? Obviously that area is commuter parking isn't the highest and best use, but there is a need for some parking to support. The businesses downtown, the park. If we wanted to resurface that, are we going to be allowed to do that? Or whoever happens on it?
Are you talking about just resurfacing the asphalt?
Yeah, just the.
Yeah, that's not a shoreline permit.
That's not considered redevelopment.
No, no, that's maintenance. Um, but if we're talking about, um. Coming in and, you know, like moving parking around, like tearing down a building. And building a parking lot in its place or tearing out a park, God forbid, and, and putting parking lot in its place. Something like that, then pro- probably what's going to be required here is a feasibility, you know, analysis or something. Why did we have to put parking here? If it's to support a marina. If it's to support something that's actually water dependent, then you can make a convincing argument that yes, it had to be put here. But, you know, i- it may be different. If it's to say, well, it's to support my business, which is on the south side of Bay Street, all the way over there. Well, you know, again, I'm, I don't want to get into hypotheticals too much, but there's, you know, there's a range of reasons why something is feasible. Or necessary for it to be in the shoreline. And it's always, you, you could always make a case about why the marina. Or the port is going to need its parking to be on the waterfront, or at least a certain proportion of its parking.
I, I can appreciate the marina. That's an easy one. But when, you know, you talked about the buildings on the south side of Bay Street. We also have businesses on the north side of Bay Street that they have parking behind their buildings. My Reese gets redeveloped and they have a certain amount of parking that's immediately adjacent to their, their business. Their, their buildings on their property. Can they redevelop that facility and? Be able to maintain the parking that they need.
Oh, yeah. And, and we're talking, again, we were talking before about, you know, you're building a new, you're redeveloping your own store or your own apartments. And, you know, we're not going to say that you can't put your parking back on your own site. Um, we're not going to say you have to purchase, uh, a lot or rent a, a property down the road. And put parking outside of the shoreline jurisdiction.
So even if it's on their property, but within that setback range or whatever the jurisdiction of the shoreline, they'll be able to. Refer reach their parking.
Uh, yeah, I mean, and, and Nick contradicts me if you think I'm interpreting this wrong, but I think that would be highly unreasonable. And if you think that we should put something in here that makes that more clear.
Yeah, I, I agree that would be unreasonable, but I would just point you to the subarea plan that's under development. And I think to a large extent, the subarea plan for downtown is going to dictate some of these parking standards as well. And so between, uh, Sydney and Frederick, for instance, they're calling for a reconfiguration of that existing parking area. As a new street so that we can have, uh, businesses that actually front on a street along the water as opposed to having their back to the water. And so I think that that sort of, of redevelopment, you're lessening the impact of having parking on the water. And when we met with, um, uh, the Department of Ecology and showed them our subarea plan, they were very pleased to see that we were. Uh, considering those options and, and help, kind of helped show us how to make these amendments so that that sort of thing would be allowed. Because it is, it is an improvement to our downtown overall, while still lessening parking impacts, but also allowing parking to be built.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay, um, page one hundred and fourteen of your packet. Shoreline exemptions, just wanted to make it clear, because it might be kind of confusing. I, it was confusing when I took this, this to the planning commission. There's a lot of strikeout and underline in this section. And what we did for shoreline exemptions here was instead of, as in the previous version of the S N P. It spelled out every single thing from the WAC and the R C W. That was a, a potential exemption from permit requirements. And the problem with that is those change. You know, as you saw on the checklist, um, ecology is constantly updating and amending its laws. Sometimes those are exemptions that get amended and then our regulations become outdated. And so to try to avoid that happening as much as possible, we decided we would simply refer back to the sections of the WAC. And the R C W that contain exemption criteria. So that's what we've done. Instead of spelling it all out and then having those become outdated. We now go back to the WAC, R C W one seventy three twenty seven or R C W ninety fifty eight. And then certain ones that, that ecology does require us to spell out right below it. And we deleted, um, everything which starts at page one sixteen below, that used to be all the exemptions spelled out. So we didn't delete exemptions. Um, we just have referred back to the WAC so that everything remains current. And we don't, we don't have any problems with outdated, um, information. And then let's see, on page one fifteen, multiple permits required, section eight point four. There was no guidance previously for applicants who wanted to or needed to get more than one permit at a time. Let's say that you needed, you wanted just a general shoreline substantial development permit, but you also needed a variance or a conditional use permit. Or you, if you were coming in for a subdivision at the same time. So we wanted to let you know, um, how, the way that we do it is that we process all permits at once. And the, they will be processed according to the highest permit type as specified in, um, title twenty. And, you know, if there are any conflict between the, the requirements, the regulations, the more stringent ones control. And we just wanted to put that in here so that there was no confusion and you would be, be able to refer to our permit types and processes in title twenty. Just for in informational purposes. Um, let's see, and I promise I'm getting close to the end of this.
I won't ask any more questions.
Oh, no, 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 please do, please do. Was, was there something you had a question about?
No, not at all. It's just, I think the rest of the council, if they're not interested with you and I discussing this.
Okay, um, I, I know that this is going beyond, uh, the time that was allowed allotted, so I, I'm trying to wrap this up. But it just interrupts me. Um, on page one twenty four, shoreline variances. We, we said in our previous S N P that we allowed administrative variances, but we didn't actually have a, a process to do it. So nobody could actually apply for it or get one. So that was the problem, because a variance, meaning that if you, um, wanted to change the setback. Let's say on your, uh, you're building a house in the shoreline and you couldn't find a way to make your house fit. And you just wanted to change the setback from fifteen feet to twelve feet. And, you know, y- you had to go to the hearing examiner for that. You had to pay for that. You had to go through the whole process. You had to have the delay of time. And the outcome wasn't certain and your neighbors could come object and everything like that, even when there was no environmental impact or anything else. That was really a problem, because there was no way to grant the administrative variance. You could even point to where it said in the S N P, but I'm supposed to be able to have an administrative variance and we would say, yeah, but we have no process. So now we've created the process. Now you can do it. There is a standard permit process meets title twenty requirements. And we think this will be, um, very helpful to a lot of people. Don't have to go through the hearing examiner and spend all that money. So we have a new process here for that. Page one thirty one of your packet, um, we used to have a very long shoreline enforcement and penalty process spelled out. That I'm not really sure why, honestly, we had all this, but now we're just saying. That shoreline enforcement and penalties are, are, are applied in same exact way through title twenty, um, that our shoreline code. that our shoreline code enforcement officer, the code enforcement officer for the city does enforcement inspection and penalties exactly in the same way as any other enforcement action. And our city shoreline administrator is the same person as our code enforcement officers has, has the authority to enforce the city shoreline master program. So that also makes that a lot simpler to enforce and a lot simpler for people to understand. And the last thing that we did in the definitions section, which is starts on page one thirty-four, we just added a number of definitions to support the new regulations that we put in place. Some of those are related to sea level rise. Some of those are related to the flood management requirements that we put into place. And some were related to the requirements of ecology to have more specific information and definitions in here. So I'm, I this up, that's it for me, but I'm glad to go through any of the information that we've discussed and provide more specificity on, on any of this information.
Questions for Carrie?
I would just like to thank Carrie for the thoroughness of walking through it. I know it was time consuming and, but I thought it was important that the council be made aware of the areas that you thought needed our attention. Like John, I had read it and I had asked some things with some questions about specific businesses, but we can talk about that offline. I also want to say that I was involved with an update probably two thousand eight, two thousand seven sometime earlier. And at that point, within our shoreline master plan, you could not change the footprint of your building. If you wanted to take a building down and, you know, and redevelop, but you had to use the same footprint. So I think the shoreline master plan has evolved significantly since then. So.
Was that for non-conforming buildings? I, I can't imagine.
Remember, but I remember that was a great deal of our discussion because we were, I'm trying to remember the example, one of the buildings, you know, was thinking about redeveloping and they were required to do it on their footprint. Yeah. So anyway, that was like I said, that was several years ago.
It evolved.
Yeah, it's evolved.
So the next step for this, as I mentioned, is this will come to council on the March ninth meeting. And so if between now and then you have any questions or you see something in here that you don't understand, please let Carrie or I know. And I think I saw a hand shoot, shoot up as I started talking. So if there's more questions, go ahead.
It, it's not a question. I just want to echo what Beck just said. Carrie, you did a great job, not only on presenting this and going through it, putting up with my questions, but also it's pretty thorough that, that the review that you did and developing this thing. So thank you very much.
The other one question I have is have we shown this at all to our water dependent businesses right now? I'm thinking basically the marinas and because they were involved several years ago in updating the shoreline master plan when we did a rewrite of it. And I, you know, I'm thinking like in terms of Sultans or Sinclair inlet or yacht fish, any of those places have, have we made them aware that we're updating?
Yes, we send out two rounds of public notice. And both times it went out to everyone on the shoreline, actually within eight hundred feet. Not just within the shoreline, but within eight hundred feet of the shoreline. And it went out to both property owners and all businesses, since they're not always the same, to cover all bases.
Carrie, I also wanted to thank you for the work you've done. I know this is a heavy lift. There's no way of getting around that. And especially when you are incorporating sea level rise into a document like this. So good work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Carrie. Any final questions? I'm told that we were successful on Facebook Live and we had up to a half a dozen people viewing us live streaming tonight on, on Facebook. So just go ahead.
There I go. I have a good order before we adjourn.
Go ahead.
As I have mentioned at a couple of council meetings, that KRCC is having a retreat on incorporating equity into our CPPs. And today, the executive committee wanted to invite all of councils and all of commissioners to join that. So I wanted to be sure and extend that invitation to everyone. It'll be March fourth from one to four. Since it's on Zoom, we don't have to worry about bringing refreshments for everyone or making sure we have a facility with enough room. So since we're doing it on Zoom, we thought we would just open it up to all of our councils. So I would like to extend that invitation. And if our city would like to invite a guest or two from our community that we thought might be interested in that discussion, we can do that also.
See that on my calendar, March fourth at one o'clock, one to four.
Yep.
And I would add that there's no parking problem to that meeting.
That is correct.
Mayor, one, one item for the good of the order.
Here.
I just want to echo something that the mayor put out that we've heard from some citizens about the snow plowing by the city. I had several people approach, approached me today while I was walking my dog out in the sunny slope area saying they appreciated the, the city's work and getting the roads plowed in a timely manner. So thanks very much, mayor.
You're, I didn't do the work, but I'll pass on the accolades. You guys were part of the equation though. You've assisted in getting us, the equipment necessary to get the work done. So I, we much appreciated your contribution too. With that, we, it's ten to nine and we have no more business. So I, I think this meeting is adjourned.
Hi, everybody.
Thanks, everybody.